And a call to order this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, June 24th, if you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Johnson, if you will please lead us this evening.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lees, if you will call the roll.
Mr. Vois. Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Madam President, you have a forum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our June 10th, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from June 10th, 2025. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, any abstentions? And one abstention. So seven in favor, one abstention. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any cards, but if anyone would like to say something, you can fill out a card, the white sheet of paper on the table in the back, and then hand it to the clerk. And we will now move on to the mayor's comments. Good evening, Mayor Johnson.
Good evening, Madam President. Thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. Two items that I would like to discuss with you. First, this is Serve Week in the City of Noblesville. I'm so honored to, you know, be helping to lead a city that is so focused in public service and service to others. This week kicks off, tonight actually kicks off, this Serve Celebration from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Hamlin County 4-H Fairgrounds. Anyone's welcome to go with me as soon as this meeting is over, over there to celebrate. But you will see a lot of service projects going on all through the city of Noblesville. This is one of the largest weeks of service in the country. So I know you'll see many city departments that will be going and volunteering their time to help neighbors out throughout our community. I know the mayor's office will be packing meals on Friday at Hyde's. Anyone's welcome to join us for that as well. So thanks to Patrick Probst and Serve Noblesville, their entire team, just an incredible organization doing great work, really is what, in my opinion, the foundation of our community, which is serving and helping others. Speaking of serving and helping others, I have some great bodyguards over my left shoulder here tonight that I would like to talk about. We are so fortunate to have a historic community, and with a great historic community comes great organizations that have been around for a long time doing incredible work. And tonight, I get to honor one of those great organizations. In fact, I had to call an audible and ask City Councilor Todd Thurston to step in for me on Friday to honor this organization as I was at a conference out of town. But our friends at the Noblesville Elks Lodge are celebrating a 125 years of service to our community, which is no short feat there. So we got to celebrate and honor them on Friday night at their banquet. Thank you, Todd, for stepping in and doing that on my behalf. And I would like to read the proclamation that was read to them on Friday night, just to honor their service, if you'll allow me. So it says, "Whereas the City of Noblesville celebrates 125th anniversary of the Noblesville Elks Lodge, Number 576, and the Elks Lodge is guided by the enduring principles of charity, justice, brotherly love, and fidelity, working to promote the welfare and happiness of its members while inspiring a spirit of American patriotism. And whereas since its founding in 1900, the Noblesville Elks have invested over $5 million in programs benefiting local residents, including supporting, support for individuals with special needs, scholarships, athletic teams, veterans, and patriotic initiatives. And whereas one of the most important fundraising activities to the Elks has been through their Elks State major project, which helps fund cancer research. And whereas the City of Noblesville expresses its gratitude for the Elks' longstanding service and the enduring legacy that they continue to build within our community." So now therefore, I, Chris Jensen, Mayor of the City of Noblesville of the State of Indiana, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 20th, 2025, as Noblesville Elks Lodge Day in the City of Noblesville, and invite all citizens to duly note this occasion. In a minute, I'm going to invite them up to take a picture with everybody, but I also would like to announce, and Todd announced it on Friday, and you will know about it because a press release will go out here in a matter of hours, that we have asked the Noblesville Elks Lodge to serve as grand marshals of our Fourth of July Independence Day Parade next Friday. So if you would, join me in congratulating them. At this time, I would invite you guys, if you'd like to come forward, we'll take a group photo. But again, thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to honor this great organization.
We're going to stand up.
See, move this way, the whole group kind of, yeah, stay there.
Steak. Steak.
I can't see Megan's face, so I'm crying.
So sorry. I haven't been to the Ochs.
Dave, if you could go between these two and then...
If you can't see Luxus, she can't see you.
Correct. Thank you.
That was my idea.
Stick with me, guys. Take a couple. To be sure, I need a podium to stand on. There we go. Awesome.
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, I will just share that I have fond memories of growing up at the Elks Club on Friday nights out by Fox Glen, or Fox Prairie, and being able to bowl. My parents, we'd do the buffet in the evening, parents would stay upstairs, kids went downstairs to the bowling alley. So lots of great times at the Elks Club. So thank you all for your many years of service. Okay. We will move on to council committee reports and start with our utilities and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Utilities Committee met on May 29th, called to order at 9:00 a.m. Present with me was Councilman Peterson, City Clerk Evelyn Clark, Utilities Director Jonathan Murgau and their staff. Mr. Davis and Mr. Elliott were not able to attend the meeting. Review the financial results from the first quarter of 2025, and the revenues are favorable. Expenditures are slightly unfavorable when compared to the adopted budget, but overall, the finances at Utilities are in very, very good shape. In fact, the, Mr. Murgau stated that the Utility Department recently received a higher credit rating for the bonds that we issue, a double A1 rating, which is great news for taxpayers and for the department. Mr. Murgau went on to state regarding the Indiana property tax impacts to the Utility Department, that since the Utility Department operates largely on user fees, that we really didn't anticipate a very large impact from property taxes. He did not, although they are working with the Office of Finance and Accounting regarding salaries to see what kind of impact the property tax adjustments are going to make to that department. In terms of large capital projects, we discussed the three build, operate, transfer projects in progress, those being the work on the headworks, on the solids solidification project, and the lift station 22 replacement in Forest Main on the west side of the city. Two of the projects are well underway, and I believe the third project, the lift station replacement in Forest Main, was awarded at the previous Board of Works meeting. Those, that work is either underway or in design and scoping. Three large projects to benefit our Utility Department. Part of the open discussion we had then talked a bit about odor control in the city. We've got issues, and we all on the council certainly hear from constituents regarding malodorous odors here in the, in our, in our great city. The Utility Group, Utility Department has retained a consultant out of Louisville, Kentucky that specialize in odor control issues, and they're going to be evaluating and providing some recommendations for us. In addition, the BOT work ongoing with the headworks and the lift station is, will alleviate an awful lot of what we have in problems with that. The downtown proactive sewer cleaning, if not having started, is soon to start, which again will, will help us all. We also discussed a bit about the Embrace Downtown project upcoming, and Mr. Murgau, the Utility Department is very involved with, with the work that's ongoing with engineering for upgrading that infrastructure in our downtown. And that concludes my report. Any questions? Apologize for the length, but we only do this quarterly, so.
Any questions of Mr. Johnson?
Questions, I can answer. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We will move on to the Downtown District Committee. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. The Downtown District Committee met on Friday, May 30th. Dave Johnson, Darren Peterson, Megan Wiles, and myself were present. We walked through a lot of the projects that are happening downtown. Two that we touched on in depth were the Logan Street crosswalks, so those are the ones that are crossing Logan Street by the Farmers Market. So they were updating us on the construction in that area, that, that trail will connect Federal Hill to Forest Park, but then there'll be a crossing over Logan Street, which is yet to be finished with construction hurdles that they're jumping through, but that's something that is coming in the summer. We also touched on Embrace Downtown. Mr. Johnson briefly touched on that from a Utilities perspective, which is a really important part of that, that project. But the team also touched on the engineering and design that's underway for Phase 1A. They're still trying to determine, again, with the scope and the funds that we have available, what, what they're able to do and the timeline that we have set out. So that's what they are going through now. There's a few different subgroups that are meeting, talking about aesthetics, talking about historic preservation and all of that, how that can fit to this project. And so there will be more of that effort that's coming forward, not only to council but then to the public as we end the summer, go into fall, to talk through what those next steps are so that we can be ready for next year. We briefly talked about Penny Festival. I'm sure that Kelly McPhail will be in front of us at some point, so I do not want to steal the mayhem or thunder, but it was a great turnout, as anybody who showed up there knew. It also helped this year that NDOT did not close 322, so that was open, and then obviously Pleasant Street was open as well. That was another artery in and out of the city. We made special note to touch on the fact that Street Department and Public Safety were out in full force to help guide folks around our city, which is great. A part of Downtown District Committee is, belongs to the Parks Department as well, and they talked about a few projects that they're working on, one of which is coming next year, which will be the fact that Forest Park is turning 100 years old. So they are working on some programming around that that will come in 2026. And then, it's hard to believe, but the next Downtown District Committee will be ended this week. So more to come there on Downtown District.
Any questions of Mr. Smith? Seeing none, we will move on to the Finance Committee report. And Mr. Smith.
Okay. Finance Committee met on June 19th. Pete Schwartz and myself were present. It was a very quick meeting, but we talked through some of the tax abatement compliance that, I think, I can't remember, this past few years that we put in place, that anyone that went through that process was also subject to some sort of community involvement. And that was just the Economic Development Department reporting out some of the things that they did. So that, that report will come out showing how they've been involved, but a few of the ones that were on there, they're volunteering, they've sponsored events, given donations to nonprofits here in Noblesville. One of the things I thought was interesting is they, a few of them have hosted interns from high school. I think that's just a really great way to get some of the young people in our community to know what they're doing. So that will all come in front of council sometime in the next month, but they just gave us a preview. Other than that, it was a very short meeting.
Okay.
And since we didn't have a forum, we weren't able to send the claims for the, our recommendation, but that went to council.
Any questions of Mr. Smith regarding finance?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve the claim.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero. New ordinances for discussion. Counsel to consider ordinance number 19-06-25, an ordinance regarding a text amendment to adopted ordinance number 39-8-07 for the Hamilton Town Center, reducing the minimum lot size to two lots at 13078 Tagler Drive and property adjacent to the east.
Move there to...
Second.
Ms. Stevens.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. Before you is the adoption of an amendment to the Hamilton Town Center Plan Development Ordinance. Specifically, this amendment will deal with one lot and one lot only, so this will not apply to all lots within Hamilton Town Center. We are talking about a lot on Tagler Drive. It's in red on the overhead. Under construction, or actually, they're, they're finished, is the Valvoline. Valvoline is on the western portion of the site. Under consideration is an amendment to allow a lot split for Lot 5 that would create two lots that do not meet the minimum lot size for that district. Originally, it went to the Plan Commission with a negative recommendation to the April Plan Commission meeting. However, the applicant asked for a continuance to allow additional time to work with staff. At that time, staff was concerned that the remainder of the lot after the split, if it was approved, this eastern portion here, would not accommodate a development without variances or additional amendments to the Hamilton Town Center Plan Development Ordinance. After some back and forth with the applicants and explaining our concerns, they did present a concept plan that I will show you, just to give you an idea of what potentially could go there. Did I leave it behind now? This is in no way a final plan, but it just, it provided some assurance to staff that a development could be constructed on the site that would meet the ordinance requirements and the plan development requirements. It went to the May 19th Plan Commission meeting with a positive recommendation for the amendment to the ordinance with a couple of stipulations. Number one, that it was understood that this applies only to Lot 5, that all TAC comments were to be addressed prior to any issuance of an ILP for work. A secondary plat, which we have received, should be submitted. And more importantly, one of the stipulations is that the site shall be developed for and occupied by a single user only. So again, giving staff some assurance that this site could be developed without benefit of any additional variances or waivers, a single user rather than a multi-tenant building. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the ordinance or the process.
Any questions?
Just curious, the, has the Fire Department looked at this? Just, access looks a little tricky without access on the Tagler. Just curious.
They have not, they have not. When the Valvoline was developed, one of the conditions of approval was that there would be no further curb cuts for this lot on Tagler Drive. So they must make use of the shared access at the midpoint between Valvoline and a proposed development. All of the comments from Fire will have to be addressed at the TAC review. So when the detailed development and ILP applications are received, at that point, we will, will have to address access and maneuverability through the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Do you know, just in terms of reference, what does the Firestone to the south of this proposed site, what kind of acreage, what kind of square footage, building size? Trying to get a feel for what it might look and feel like. I know if you go, continue east on 146th Street, the little section by Oleo, and that's just, I mean, so incredibly congested there, and that's my concern, is that this, this becomes another one of those situations.
becomes another one of those situations, and I struggle with that.
Sure. So it might be a little easier to look at the ordinance. Let's see. Let me see if I have an exhibit here that might...
Do we anticipate action on this tonight?
So when Hamilton Town Center ordinance was adopted, the preliminary plan for this section of the shopping center was that there would be smaller outlots immediately adjacent to 136th Street, and then behind it, where BJ's is now, this was all intended to be inline tenant area, inline tenant shopping, sorry. It obviously did not develop that way. These lots here are about an acre, a hair over an acre for each one of these outlots. What's proposed would be two lots. Valvoline would be on a lot that would be just less than an acre. Remaining would be just less than an acre. So they're each going to be about .91 of an acre rather than the full acre that would be required.
So not really markedly inconsistent with what we currently have?
Correct. Correct. And again, I think the stipulation that they can only develop it for a single user, again, does, does offer some, some reassurance that it will not be overdeveloped at that site.
Mr. Johnson, that CVS is 10,000 square feet and the Firestone's about 6,000 square feet. Their site plan proposes 6,000 square feet.
Just 6,000.
A fast food restaurant, they had a drive-through on there, a fast food restaurant would be about 2,400 to 3,000 square feet. So I think when this gets developed, they're going to have a lot more room than they even showed on their site plan.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Reynolds here?
I believe a representative from Spaceco is here tonight.
Would they like to say anything? And if you'll please state your name and your address for the record.
Derek Gordon with Spaceco, 3850 South Priority Way, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46240. I don't have much more to add than what she did. I brought similar exhibits. You asked about the acreage of the Firestone, I looked that up while I was sitting, it looked like it was about .9 acres, so in a line, that's what we're doing.
Any questions of the listener?
I know this sounds to go to Plan Commission, but I think this is going to be hard to, at least for me, to get through approval. I know that Bergen, Tagler, is already very crowded with the gas station, the car wash and Chick-fil-A. I know this is not Chick-fil-A, so there's obviously not as many cars that are going to queue up. Oh, did they ever get a plane? Okay. But I think that's like where I'm kind of...
Are there any use restrictions on the site? Can this, could this be fast food? Starbucks?
Chick... Let's see.
Trader, Trader Dave.
Don't start the rumor.
Yeah.
Although we've been, I don't, I would like a Trader Dave. Let me see here. So there have been some amendments to Hamilton Town Center ordinance that allowed for additional uses above and beyond what was originally adopted. Give me just a second while I awkwardly flip through the pages.
And I'm going to clarify, it did go to Plan Commission and with a favorable recommendation, correct?
Yeah.
Coming to us?
I think it was Nuttup?
Yes.
Teno.
Not to pile on, but one more question while you're looking that up. Cabella Way is a pri, is a public street? Tagler Drive is a private street?
This portion of Tagler is private, correct.
And what's the quality of it? Is it in good shape or bad shape?
It's not in the best shape. I, I think that was also brought up at the Plan Commission, if I remember correctly. Yes, there was some concern about the, the maintenance of Tagler.
Who's in, who's in control of that? Who's in control of fixing that? Is there an HLA, POA?
And who are you with? Okay, thank you.
Sarah Reed, Community Development Director, for the record. This area has all been master planned with Republic Development, and so they are kind of the underlying master developer for this whole area, Saxony and Hamilton Town Center included. That is who we would start a conversation with regarding the condition of the private roadways.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm also trying to look at the ordinance quickly, but...
And too, because my pages are all out of order.
I don't know what this subdistrict is.
Well, that would be in my staff report.
I mean, I'm just concerned, we've had a lot of conversations about private drives. I won't go through the list of them, and I'm just concerned if we add Valvoline, Valvoline is hopefully a high-traffic user and successful. CVS, this is, this could be fast food. BJ's is a high-traffic. Firestone, and if Tagler's already in rough shape, I just would like some kind of assurance or discussion with Republic that that gets managed better than it is now.
Addressed. Yep. And maintained appropriately.
I don't know how we hold this project's feet to the fire, but it just would be nice if we knew what we're going with. What was the question? Was there any other?
And office.
Office, yeah.
You said a drive-to restaurant.
Office.
I mean, that's what they're showing on the plan.
West is office. Remember, that, that was only to give us some assurance that it could be developed in a way that met all of the requirements for setbacks and, and parking.
So they don't have a tenant yet?
They do not have, that, my understanding is, they do not have a tenant. They did not have a tenant by the time we went to Plan Commission. And again, the only thing, the only other application we've seen come in so far is for the plat, because they were assuming that the ordinance would be adopted, so they went ahead and filed.
He just showed it right through, so that's...
Yeah, the drive-through is a primary, it's permitted.
Okay.
So sit-down restaurant at Perry Avenue.
Raising Cane is right there. Madam President, do we need to table it?
Yeah. Is there urgency that we need to approve this this evening? Or could we get some additional information and bring it back in three weeks?
So the 45-day timeframe, this would count as a council action though, wouldn't it?
Continue. Sir?
Yeah, this would count as council action, asking to continue it to a future meeting, as long as the council's not sitting on their hands and is moving things along. Asking, asking to continue it for additional information is inappropriate action.
Well, yes. What would you like to see?
I, I would like to just have an answer on Tagler Road, when it's going to be approved and the condition of, and what the plan is before, before we add more traffic.
Or continue to the next meeting or until we have that?
And just a reminder, we do have three weeks until next meeting.
Technically, this ordinance is on first reading, so if you just don't take an action, it would just automatically be on your agenda for next meeting, so you don't have to have a formal motion to continue. First reading tonight, council's action of just allowing it to sit on the agenda, I think, is appropriate as well, so. And that, that should be enough time to get you the answers to the questions that you've asked and to come back with a plan on Tagler.
I mean, you're walking the boat. I, I just, that's something I would like to see.
We can also provide the list of uses that are permitted by right on this lot.
That would be helpful. Yeah. So we will take action at the next regularly scheduled meeting of council.
You would like the uses?
Uses.
And more information on the maintenance of Tagler Drive?
Yes, please. Even when it was last repaired or what they're going to bury in that giant pothole at the corner there. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council, which would like answered before the next meeting?
Madam President, will we hear, will they have TAC before the next meeting? Will you have an answer from Fire Department?
Yeah, we, we won't have TAC by then, because TAC would require an actual development plan, so we won't have TAC comments. The commitment or the condition that was put on it by the Plan Commission was that at the time of TAC, they'd have to comply with all TAC comments. So it was an identifier to them that we knew we were in, circulation is going to be a potential issue, util, all those things will be issues for TAC. We won't have TAC comments by your next meeting, because there's no plan development.
Correct. The only thing in front of TAC right now is their secondary plat, to actual subdivision.
Anything else? Okay, we'll see you in our next meeting. We now are on to council comments. Mr. Mayor, would you like to share a few things?
Yeah, just briefly, appreciate that. I know I alluded to it in the introduction as I talked about our friends at the Elks Club, but I want to note that next Friday is Independence Day, the Fourth of July. We will be continuing one of the longest-running traditions in this community with our festival next Friday. The parade will kick off at 4:00 p.m. We'll run the regular, normal route. I've pointed out, because last year, recall, we gave our friends on Clinton Street a little bit of a show and went down Clinton Street due to the closure of State Road 32, since we'll, we'll go back to our normal route down Logan Streets per normal plans.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Back to Darren Peterson's front yard, so. And then the fireworks festival will kick off at 6:00 p.m. at Forest Park. Hairbanger's Ball is headlining that, and fireworks will be shortly after at 10:00 p.m. All this information is available on the city's website with parking options and whatnot, but last year was a huge festival. It's, it's usually a great event, so we look forward to seeing many in the community there next Friday. And one last thing I will just note, as honor after July 7th, State Road 32 at Hague Road will fully close. I said I'm going to say this every chance I get. Appreciate all those who have navigated that barrier recently. It's actually pretty smooth right now because the light is adjusted to east to west on State Road 32, but honor after July 7th, the entire intersection on State Road 32 at Hague Road will close for 75 days for the roundabout installation, the tunneling underneath State Road 32 for the Midland Trace Trail. Obviously, many detours available out there, Chicago is the one that tends to be most noted, but there are several avenues that you can take. And then Council Thurston was enjoying one of those today as there was an accident on 146th Street. So please plan accordingly, give grace to your neighbor, and thank you for allowing me to share that yet again.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, one item. Take a moment, I know we've all, we've all seen announcements and whatnot, but want to recognize Sergeant Jason Schonkweiler from our Noblesville Police Department, having been named the Indiana School Resource Officer of the Year this year. It's quite an honor, and that group of, that group of officers does an outstanding job keeping our schools safe, and just wanted to publicly recognize Sergeant Schonkweiler. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Steve. Perhaps we could ask Mr. Schonkweiler to join us one evening, and we can recognize him officially here.
He's a busy boy. Football's going to start soon.
That's true.
But thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.